Okay, Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We're here today for fiscal year 2020 budget for our tourism panel. We are going to start off with Visit Baltimore. I believe BOPA will be presenting in the convention center. Is there anyone else that's presenting? Okay, I would ask that each of your respective groups, if you could keep your presentation to about five minutes, let's get started.
Councilman, it's Visit Baltimore Convention Center and BOPA is on there as well.
Oh, did I say that?
You might have, I didn't think you said that, but BOPA's on there too.
Everything's blurring together at this point, Bob, thank you. We've also been joined by Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, member of the committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, staff to the committee, Rebecca Tab from the Office of Council President, Brandon Scott, Jeff Amoros, who's representing Mayor Jack Young. Mr. Hutchinson, please take it away. And Al, if you could introduce whoever's here from your team.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair Costello. With the Visit Baltimore team, Mr. Charles Jeffers, our chief operating officer, Ms. Mia Blom, who's now our new interim director of public affairs and interim director of our foundation. So, we're glad that she's a partner. I think it's just the three of us from Visit Baltimore. So, again, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair Costello, also Councilwoman Snead and other members of the council. As most of y'all know, Visit Baltimore is a 501(c)(6) and our job is contracted by the city of Baltimore to sell, solicit, and market promotions to attract visitors and conventions to Baltimore City. And we partner very well with Peggy Daidakis' team at the convention center. So, our main mission is to generate economic impact through tourism. And last year, the real exciting number was through economic impact, the city of Baltimore received 299 million in city taxes and fees, and that came from about 32.5 million in hotel tax receipts. And the state of Maryland gathered from that 417 million in state fees and taxes. As you recall, from the state law, Visit Baltimore is required to receive 40% of the hotel room tax that our industry collects annually. And this formula has been in place for years, and we get 40%, the city gets 60% of that collection. I do want to point out, though, in this year's budget preparing for FY '20, because FY '28, the taxes were down, Visit Baltimore, we reallocated $296,000 back to the city because of that deficit, so that we got reimbursed and we paid that back. My ultimate goal is to really drive further economic development and increase visitation here in Baltimore. We had a few big wins that I just want to highlight for you from last year because I think it's important for you to know some of the success stories. One of the big wins was the city of Baltimore was able to be selected to host the CIAA men's and women's basketball tournament, which begins in February of '21. It's a three-year contract, so February '21 through '23. It's significant not only because it's an athletic event that's coming to our city, but it's in a need period. It's the last week of February, when typically our hotel industry and restaurants and attractions are slow. From data that Charlotte, North Carolina gave us, this event drove $50 million in economic impact to the community, between 120,000 to 150,000 visitors during that week. So, we think it's going to be a huge economic driver for the city, as well as the region and the state, so we're very excited. The other big news story was the passage of the Tourism Improvement District. I really want to personally thank the council for your assistance with that, and I really want to point out to Councilman Pinkett for his help in us creating a grant program, a diversity inclusion grant program that's going to be a part of this initiative. And then the last thing I'll mention is that we're going through a rebranding. Visit Baltimore will be rolling out a program, we've been talking to stakeholders all around the city, we're going to be announcing this week, a new creative agency, a new PR firm. We're going to be repositioning with a couple of local agencies, but at the end of the day, next spring, we're going to be rolling out a brand-new Visit Baltimore look and feel, but a brand-new storytelling for Baltimore and partner with a lot of my colleagues in the room to better tell the story. So, we really appreciate the council's support on everything we've done this far, your support in this FY '20 budget. And at the end of the day, we're all partners here to sell this great city of Baltimore and want you to know that Visit Baltimore's team stands ready to partner with the council and also stand ready to partner with my other colleagues here to make tourism one of the best things going.
Thank you, Al. And Julia, I'm sorry, I'm remiss because I noticed that you guys have a slide too, or somewhere in the presentation, but I'll grab you at the end. Okay, thank you, Al. I'd like to introduce or recognize Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District, vice chair of the committee, and Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. Let's go to Peggy next.
Peggy Daidakis, Executive Director of the Baltimore Convention Center. Thank you for having us today. With me is Matt Campbell, our deputy director, and Jaka Shinkani, who's our director of financial operations with the center. As Al said, we're partners in working to attract conventions and trade shows and events that will drive economic impact to the city. We have an agreement that's in place with the state of Maryland since 1996-97, when we expanded the convention center, where they are partners with us with a small capital improvements fund, as well as they pay two-thirds of our operating deficit and the city pays one-third. We had a third renewal of that last year, where we are now committed with the state until 2029. So, the state is very important to the success of what we do. So, in the operating budget, we anticipate the city's contribution will be about $3.1 million. That would be the city's share of the operating deficit. The rest is made up of the revenues that we bring in from events and the partners that we get commissions from, food service, audiovisual, internet, telecommunications, et cetera. And the state will pay the rest of it. So, it is a economic impact to the city is measured and studied each year by law. The state has to put together an economic study to see what the impact is of the convention center alone. And in fiscal '18, which is the first full year, the last full year that they have studied, we have an economic impact of $368.4 million to the city, with nearly 3,500 jobs that we, the convention center, generate. And our investment is a five-to-one ratio, so for every dollar the city invests, we get $5 back. So, I think it's a good opportunity for us to continue pushing to drive business to our city. You will see that the events dropped a bit in fiscal '18 from the previous year. We had one large event that had many subgroups to it, so that kind of drove the numbers up. But you will see our target for '19 and '20 is slightly down. Some of that is due to availability of the center, and we have many events that cannot fit because we have no space available for them. And as you know, we're just on the infancy stages of studying and expansion and renovation of the center, which the original one opened in 1979, and the expansion was in 1996-97. The other thing that has been a challenge is the perception of the public safety. So, we are working with all of our partners, city police, Downtown Partnership, the Visit Baltimore, to try to enhance the public safety perception. I know that our teams go and visit with customers, and we also bring in whatever public safety officials to help them identify the positives about being in the city. Once they're here, they love it. But some of the things we're doing is enhancing our security measures at the convention center. We've put a whole new lighting program, interior and exterior, and that is nearing completion, so that brightens up. And Department of Transportation also added a lot of lights around the center. And we are increasing our digital cameras, and our staff is working with Baltimore City Police to see if we can connect our systems to help the police department, if there is an opportunity for them to have to see what's going on. The other thing we're doing, and we understand that there's an opportunity in the enhancement fund, we are going to be contracting with a security firm to get a service dog. And we've had a convention or two have a dog in the convention center. We have a lot of truck traffic coming in and out of the building. So, we want to enhance knowing what's going in and out of our facility, as well as just adding presence. We can't have Baltimore City Police targeted to our facility on a regular basis, so we just want to assure our conventions and trade shows that we're there to support them if they have any concerns or issues. Baltimore Convention Center, as I said, opened in 1979. Many of the infrastructure is still there, and they're failing. So, we're looking as best as we can of seeing what we can do to enhance the capital improvements. We're the oldest and smallest in our competitive set, and that does play a role in attracting our conventions. And so, we are getting support from planning department and budget as best as we can to make those enhancements, and I think that that has been a positive thing, but there's a long way to go, and a lot of it will depend on whether we get the expansion and renovation as to what our priorities are. We are very proud of our corporate social responsibility. We do a lot for the community. We have programs that people either donate time, money, or items to many organizations and people of need, particularly our food service contractor, Center Plate, is really very much engaged with the community, and we've partnered to find ways of, you know, to hold back food waste. And we've partnered with a pig farm that we are feeding many of the animals, so we're not putting that waste back into the environment. And we are also working with Food Bank and other organizations where the needy can benefit from the food that we have that we cannot use, and working with the Health Department to make sure that it is a good thing that we can do. Food diversion and donation is very, very prominent, and we recently won an award by the state to recognize our efforts there. We volunteer a lot of time, and we also have much energy savings. Our budget, we save about $1 million a year in energy because of the enhancements that we've made in our facility. And our customers recognize that. Many of our customers ask us, what are we doing to help the environment, to help the community? And it really does help us with the efforts of Visit Baltimore to attract many conventions. So, our folks are working hard. I think we're doing a good job with what we have to work with, and I appreciate the opportunity to present the snapshot of the center.
Thank you, Peggy. Donna, BOPA? And we've been joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District, fresh back from Japan.
I'm Donna Drew Soria, CEO of the Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts, and I appreciate the opportunity to come before the committee today. As you may know, we are the Events Office, the Arts Council, and the Film Office for the city of Baltimore. And as such, we work in a complimentary way with the first two presenters, Visit Baltimore and the Convention Center, in that we produce programs and events so that we can attract not only the city residents to events throughout the city, but also out-of-town visitors. In addition to that work, we are also the city's Arts Council, and we provide opportunities for artists throughout the city. We also administer the city's pass-through grants to artists, which this year totaled a little more than $200,000. But our total commission and support for the artists exceeds $2 million a year, so that's in direct commissions for local artists and local organizations. This year is going to be exciting because we're merging two of our major events, Light City and the Baltimore Book Festival for 2019, will be together in November of this year. But we're using it as an opportunity to highlight not just what's going on November 1st through 10th in those two events, but what goes on in the fourth quarter of 2019 throughout the city of Baltimore, bringing all of the cultural events underneath the same tent and doing a major marketing and communications campaign to let city residents, as well as regional and national and international audiences, know that Baltimore is the place to be from October through December of this year.
Thank you very much. Julia Walters? And we've been joined by Council President Brandon Scott.
Councilman, before we go, I just wanted to mention, for the art and culture institutions, we have four, Walters, BMA, BSO, and the zoo, and we had asked them to be present here. We don't have slides for all of them, but just want to mention that we have other representatives here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to say thank you to all of you. It really is my pleasure to let you know that the Walters is in terrific shape. The Walters Art Museum presents and preserves a city-owned art collection and three buildings, open to the public. We attract national and international and regional tourists to Baltimore, and we provide incredible educational programs to residents, schoolchildren, and teachers. I just thought you might like to know some of our little-known facts that are not in our documents. 110 of our 152 employees live in Baltimore. That's 72% of our employees. And we invest three times what all of you provide us in those employees, so it's really, it's a terrific partnership that we have with you. The return on your investment into the city, which represents about 13% of our budget, is matched by 87% in private philanthropy to take care of the buildings and art that all of you own. So, we really want to say thank you. Also, we would like to let you know that of our programs, we serve over 32,000 schoolchildren, of which over 7,000, closer to 8,000 annually, are from Baltimore City, and we provide most of the Title I schools with free busing on our dime. So, it's a really terrific ability that we have to work with private philanthropy to bring as many students from the Baltimore City Schools to us. The numbers that we represent in our report say that we serve those 8,000 students. Each one of those visits is not simply a one-touch. Most of those children have a visit off-site prior to coming to the museum, onsite at the museum, and then a follow-up visit. So, if we wanted to talk about the touch for each of those 8,000 kids, it's a three-touch process. So, we're really, really thrilled to do that. We also provide continuously free admission. All of our exhibitions are free, as well as permanent access to our permanent collection. This is part of our philosophy, that was part of the founding document, which was made in 1934 through the will of Henry Walters, which gave the mayor and city council president his collection and his buildings for the benefit of the public. It is not my job to decide which public I'm going to charge, so I bring everyone in our doors for free. So, thank you very much. And what that does is it allows us to have no barriers of access to the art and the buildings that all of you own, and all of we own. I'm a city resident, so I say thank you. We also, this year, launched a visitor survey that will be multi-year, and that indicates that the majority of our visitors are Baltimore City and Baltimore County visitors, which means that we are driving county visitors into the city, which, as all of you know, right now, is a really hard feat. And we know that they are largely incredibly satisfied once they come to the museum. We also know that since going free in 2006, we have increased from 5% to 10%, so we have doubled the amount of our visitors who are international visitors. So, we are really driving tourism to Baltimore, and that, obviously, as we've heard from Al and Donna, that does, in fact, and the convention center, that does really help our local economy. Most importantly is that these visitor surveys are showing us that since going free, so this does matter, being free does matter, our visitors have become much, much more diverse. And the thing that we were so interested and happy about was that in these visitor surveys, we found out that 7% of our visitors self-identify as gender non-conforming or binary, which I think is a really exciting thing, that people come in our doors and feel comfortable to self-identify in whatever way they want. So, that's terrific. So, I just wanted to let you know that thanks to all of you, we will continue to have free admission to our exhibitions. This coming year, we are bringing two major international exhibitions to Baltimore, one of which we have created with the Bard Graduate Center in New York City, and which will be traveling around the country. But we are also thrilled to be presenting one of the most treasured objects over the winter, which is a work from our manuscript collection, which is a work, it's a relic of touch, that is particularly important to the Christian community, although we've featured our Islamic collections recently, we've featured our Judaica recently, we do a lot with all the different religions. But we are excited to bring out for viewing an object that is apparently, and is believed to be, the Bible that St. Francis of Assisi actually used when he discovered and felt his doctrine come to him. So, this incredible object is in the Walters collection, it belongs to all of you, and last time we put it out, 40,000 people came in to see it. So, we showcase our own objects, as well as bring incredible objects from around the world for us to see. And just to close out, I also want to let you know that while you may not be out there as I am not, we do send our collections all over the world, and most recently, we've sent our objects from the collection to Paris, we've sent them to LA, we've sent them all over, and so we, our objects, represent Baltimore in the national and international spectrum. So, we love to send the positive vibes of Baltimore through our objects around the world. So, first and foremost, I just want to say thank you for everything that you do, and thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Julia. We've been joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District, member of the committee, and Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District. Julia, if that Bible brings 40,000 people out, we need to have it out on display every day. Al, congratulations on the great work to get the CIAA tournament. I know that's a huge win for the city. You know, what's exciting about that for me is not just the economic impact and the number of visitors, but the fact that the overwhelming majority of those visitors are going to be predominantly black. That's a positive thing, to have, you know, additional folks coming into our city. I was just looking up online, the lacrosse final four and quarterfinals are laid out through 2022. Do you know when the next bid will come up for that? And if we're going to be planning on bidding on that?
I don't know when it's coming out, but we will bid on it, and we will win it.
That is the correct answer.
All right.
Do we get... So, I know it's in, the championships in Philadelphia, or was in Philadelphia this year and next, and then it's in East Hartford, Connecticut, the following two years. Do we get any feedback on why we weren't selected?
Why did they go to Philly?
Yeah, and I'm assuming that precedes your time, the decision where they...
It did, but, you know, these groups definitely move around. East Coast, lacrosse is really big, so it's really just to move their fan base around. They love Baltimore. They don't leave us because they don't like us, but it's just from a fan appeal standpoint, just trying to move it around a little bit. But I can tell you, our sales team is real, we have a great relationship with the lacrosse folks. Obviously, it's right here in our hometown, so we work with them closely. We want to keep them as long as we can, but I could just tell you, from a national standpoint, sometimes these groups just want to move around, just to get another taste of a destination.
No, I understand. They're in Hempstead all four years, and Long Island, which is a hotbed for lacrosse, Providence, Rhode Island next year, and then the championship in Philly, following year, Notre Dame for another quarterfinal, and then Columbus, Ohio, but we need to get them back for sure.
We're on it for sure, no doubt. Keep in mind, in the sports marketing arena, a lot of this has to do with spreading the sports name. They want it to be an international sport. It has a recruitment aspect to it for the colleges. So, every city in America is really after lacrosse, but they know this is the hotbed here, this is where they should be, and we're going to make sure we can keep them as many times as we can.
And I assume Terry Hassline is providing support.
Terry's a partner. We have our sports marketing person that's all over this, as well as with Peggy's team at the convention center.
Good, good. Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you, and thank you, Al. And again, congratulations on the CIAA.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that we allowed them to get off the ship without signing that lifetime contract, but we'll get them next time.
Yes, sir.
I have a follow-up question, similar to the one that the chairman asked, and it's about something on a much smaller scale, something you and I have talked about before. Have we considered or worked more on trying to attract the AAU Junior Olympic Games to the city? We know that, for example, they are in, geez, I can't remember where they are this year. I believe they are in Hampton, Virginia this year. But we know, when you think about the amount of sports that are held at the Junior Olympics, gymnastics, football, track is the biggest one, of course, basketball, they bring thousands of people into, as someone who ran in Junior Olympics, is thousands of people, and because they're so young, they also have thousands of parents that spend thousands of dollars. Have we looked at those kind of things? And what would you need from us as a city to try to be more attractive for those kind of events? Because I see just being involved with the city's track team, how much the cities that have that, they almost build their infrastructure around trying to host those kind of events.
Sure. Mr. President, great question, and you and I have had some conversations about AAU. Amateur Athletic Union is a very important niche market that we're going to take a stronger look at, in partnership with the convention center and our hotel partners. I think one of the good news stories is because of the passage of the Tourism Improvement District, we're going to have additional resources now that we can go after these niche markets. We want to really grow it. As you mentioned, the young athletes just don't come, but their parents and grandparents come too, and they can take advantage of our other attractions. So, we're going to take a deeper look at it. The AAU Junior Olympics is something I hosted when I was down in Hampton Roads. It's a big event, but basketball is another huge one, as you know, that we need to take a look at. A lot of these AAU basketball events now are playing their sporting events at a convention center, setting up courts inside the building. So, we're going to take a look at that, and I think one area that you all can help us with, and we're going to look at, we have the Maryland Sports Commission, which is great, and they've been very helpful, and we partner with Terry. I think with the new Tourism Improvement District, one of the models we would love to do is to create a Baltimore Sports Commission that has more of a targeted look at Baltimore sports events. We will have some resources now to create that. We've spoken with the Maryland sports people. It's not a conflict, it actually is a support mechanism, and I really believe sports marketing is one of the niche markets, that we can grow, we need to grow it, we need the resources, and we need to put a model in place, like a Baltimore Sports Commission, that we have someone on it every single day. So, to your point, it's a serious community that we want to grow, and I think Baltimore's set up perfectly to go after some of those sporting events.
Thank you, and you can look forward to working with my office around that. That's a great idea. And I don't know, Mr. Vice Chair, you going to talk about Navy?
Yes.
So, I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Al, I appreciate the work, working with you and your team, and the work around the Tourism Investment District. I appreciate even the commitments related to the Pennsylvania Avenue corridor. We're still eagerly anticipating that district being formally recognized by the state. But I do, before I ask my question, I do want to make, I don't want to belabor the point related to lacrosse, because it's not necessarily about lacrosse. But if we think that those lacrosse venues are being selected in the Northeast to build the fan base, we're missing it, because they don't need to build the fan base in the Northeast. There's other decisions that are being made. There's other decisions that are being made of why those lacrosse venues are choosing places from Connecticut down to Philly and not coming to Baltimore, which is the birthplace, the hottest place. I guarantee if we looked at the number of people who are leaving Maryland to go to those venues, we make up a significant portion of it. And often, our teams are playing in those semi and final games. Because if you look at it, for example, when was the last time Baltimore hosted Army-Navy game?
Army-Navy football game, two years, I got here in 16, so the last time we hosted it was in 2016.
And when's the next time that Baltimore will host the Army-Navy game?
We don't know when the next time will be. When it goes back to bid, we will bid on it. And to that point, I'll let you know exactly why we didn't get the Army-Navy game, and it was all about financial commitment.
Right, right. And so you're right. Because so from 2018 to 2020, it's going to be in Philly. 2021, it'll be in MetLife. And then 2022, it'll be back in Philly. Somebody's, so there's something that we really need to discuss in the city, both as it relates to compensation to get these activities coming, but also people are making some decisions. And we need to, as a community, we need to talk about why these decisions are being made. While we can get a CIAA, which is great, but some of these other venues or other activities are making decisions not to come to Baltimore. And it's not just on you, but it's on everybody looking at this and making the decision. What do we need to do in the city to make certain that people aren't just making the decision to go up to Philly constantly? And I, you know, Philly has its assets, but we should be getting more activities than we are.
Mr. Councilman, I totally agree with you, and I think we need to have a broader conversation with stakeholders. But I can tell you, this is no secret. Army-Navy, as well as a lot of these other mega events, the reasons they go to destinations, at the end of the day, it comes down to dollars and cents. We have the venue, we have all the attractions. This is a great military town. But who can write the biggest check? I can tell you nationally, that's the play. And so as a community, we got to place, is it valuable? And whatever that number is, I can tell you, Philly wrote the check. And that's, that's a bigger conversation than Visit Baltimore. That's a city, regional, and state conversation.
And that's what I mean. Because you're right, at the end of the day, and Baltimore's check, because of Baltimore's perception, at this point, the check might have to be bigger, so that we can change some of this perception. But we've got, we've got to work together because
I agree.
Those events bring such significant economic impact that we've got to look at how we judge our investment in those types of events and activities.
Yes, sir.
My questions were more related to the work around that we did leading up to the Tourism Investment District. So can you give me an update on the status of the Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee?
Absolutely. So on that committee, we've asked-
If you can, for the purpose of the listening audience, if you can explain what that-
Sure. So in working with Councilman Pinkett and also Councilwoman Middleton, I appreciate your support on the Tourism Improvement District. We agreed to do two new initiatives that for a first time. Number one, we wanted to create a Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee of our board that's made up of about fifteen different stakeholders, from African-American community, Hispanic-Latino community, LGBTQ community. We've asked Rwanda Draper, who's a member of our board, to chair the committee. And we've asked Donna Sawyer from BOPA to Vice Chair of the Committee. We should be convening our initial meeting by the end of this month with that Subcommittee. And I can provide you the names of the folks we've reached out to that have agreed to participate. The real key for this Subcommittee is to be at advisory position to help visit Baltimore as we put together our marketing plans and also our sales initiatives, so we can go to this committee to make sure if there are any gaps, if there are any opportunities our group hasn't thought of, can they help lead us? As we bring in conventions, we want to make sure these niche markets, we have the right stakeholders at the table to give a welcoming feeling to the attendees coming in. So that committee will be working very much in lockstep with our senior leadership team, and we'll make sure we get reports back to the council. Secondarily, we've also created for the first time Diversity and Inclusion Grant Program. And this grant program will be in place after July 1st. Initially, Councilman Pinkett, our commitment to you and to the council was to start off at seventy-five thousand for a pilot program. And thankfully to Commerce for the state, they're going to step up and provide twenty-five thousand to this pilot. So now it's a hundred thousand. That's breaking news for you, my friend.
Thank you.
So, and the purpose of this grant program is set up to help some of our nonprofits here in Baltimore with a special emphasis in our African-American nonprofits. But they can come now to a place if they have an event, a festival, it has some hotel room nights generated to it, they can apply for some money for marketing and promotion purposes. And so we're going to have a criteria that we're working on, that we're going to put in place. We'll have a grant committee set up very soon. But we're excited about it. Our commitment to the council has been to grow this from a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand in four years. And it's coming through our general fund budget. It's not coming out of the TID, but it was a commitment that we made. We're excited about it. The state is going to also partner with us in the future on this because I think it's something we need to do, and we are committed to doing that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have other questions, but Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you. So excited about CIAA. While I haven't made it to any tournaments, I've had made it to the party. So I'm looking forward to making sure that we have a good selection of young people that come into that-
Absolutely.
Who will be like me, who will take advantage of that to showcase Baltimore, the young place to have fun, dinner, and drinks and all of the above. So the, my question though is we have a number of events, and so this is for BOPA, you guys, Convention Center Sales, as well as, I guess, I'm not sure if Walter's Art Museum, but who's doing the setup for some of these events that take place? Is it all happening through Baltimore?
Events specifically for CIAA?
Yeah, so, no, for any events that we have, like Light City, the Book Festival. Who's setting up for the events? Is it totally Baltimore City setting up for these events?
Sorry, when you say setup, you mean?
I mean putting out the tables, to dropping the electricity, to everything. Who's doing the-
We, the city supports us in that respect, yes.
And so where are we getting the laborers to do this?
City workers support the electrical work. We also hire about eighty production assistants that work these events for us.
And so are the people that work in these events, are they coming outside of Baltimore to-
No, they are Baltimore city residents.
They are Baltimore city residents?
Yes, they are.
So how many do we know the ages of what these folks are? Do we have those demographics? How many are African-American? I mean-
We, I can't give you specific numbers, but I can tell you, it's extremely diverse, not only in race, but in age, and also in their contribution to the setup. So the skills that they have and they bring to the production.
So how are we advertising for the job? If someone in my community is interested that is an electrician or that is a, you know, just go with his hands, how are she? How do they find out about it? How soon in advance do we advertise to say, hey, this is coming and we need X, Y, and Z?
We use our website and a, we put out a call for the different skills and participation that we need. So it's really open to the entire city, but also to the county and the region for people to apply to work for BOPA during that period of time.
And do we also use the mayor? Because I would imagine there's just some grunt work that you may not need to be certified in that-
Absolutely.
And so I'm wondering, are we using the mayor's Office of Employment Development for that aspect as well?
I don't think we've specifically used that office, but we have used youth council to do some of the work that we do with the art council work, art at work and things like that. So we do use the city services that are available to us in order to draw people of, as I said, a full range of diversity.
Okay. I would love to see the numbers. Can you actually get the numbers to me that so we can see actually how many jobs come in these short-term turnover?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Can we move on to the convention center? And so as I know you guys have a lot of events coming in, do we take people, is this all union? What happens here?
Our employees are Baltimore city employees, so all the events that take place in the convention center are handled by our employees directly. The service contractors that set up the exhibits are separate, that is hired by the customer. And most of the service contractors have agreements with the carpenters' union. And then food service has their employees, and that is, most of their employees are with Unite Here.
And is it still right, in order to even work in a convention center, you still have to have a pass to get in? Is that-
The, our employees come in and out one entrance, and we want to know who's scheduled to work for that particular day. So yes, we get a roster of people who are scheduled. And if people haven't been scheduled, but they're sitting waiting on call, then we give them temporary passes to get in.
So for the contracting folks, something turns over, you have, is something going on? I don't know, the car show, you have to set up. They already, I just want to make sure, they already have their folks that are going to come in and set up, and those people already have?
It's a union call from the exhibit services contractor, yes. So they, they know in advance what hours they need to be there and the depth of work that they need to have. So yes, they are the ones that make the call to the carpenters' union for the scheduling.
And can you tell me if we, are there any vacancies in your, in the convention center? How many people per se work there?
A total, if we're fully employed, a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty. And any vacancies at this point?
Many part-time, but if I had more money, I'd have more full-time. I know that. But no, we have not increased the full-time staff. We do always look for event staff in our lobby attendants, in our custodial, and I know food services has relationships with agencies that hire a lot of people part-time. So, but from the city employee standpoint, right now, our employees are mostly part-time. And then when we do have a vacancy full-time, we try to pull from the part-time, so we get them trained and acclimated to our business so they have a heads up. It's not always from the part-time crew, but a lot of times it is.
And are the part-time crews, since they are part-time, and I know they're always probably looking forward to make a few extra bucks, are these jobs pay above minimum wage?
Yes, they pay above minimum wage. And in fact, we have been working with Department of Human Resources and in the process of increasing the hourly rate. So that's in the works right now.
Thank you. Can we go to the Walters Art Museum? Can you-
Councilwoman Snead?
Oh, I already asked too many questions.
But we're going to, we're going to come right back to you, Julia. Hang on one second. Al, I know you have another engagement that you need to get to. Councilman Burnett has a question for you. And then I have a very short question for you, and then Visit Baltimore's good. And Middleton, okay. Please be quick because we have thirteen minutes until we start our next panel.
Got it. So I just had a, I'll make a sort of rapid-fire question for you. Just a few more on the Diversity and Inclusion Grant.
Yes.
You said there's a hundred thousand in there now, you're trying to grow to one-fifty over four years. Are there attempts by your staff to try and grow that fund through the hotel network? Are you capable, or is your agency able to leverage additional funds to grow that out even further? I think it's a great idea.
I didn't understand, when you say leverage through the hotel community, what do you mean by that?
So are you able to fundraise for the grant program? Is that something that you can do?
Well, we're going to be, we're going to be looking for other opportunities, yes, to leverage our funding for sure. I think it's an opportunity. It's a new program, first of all. Nobody's done this in Baltimore before. So we're open for private sector, other nonprofits to join us in this initiative for sure. We have to look at it. And it's going to be a work in progress, but we're open to growing the program.
Sure. No, that's awesome. And what kind of technical assistance do you provide for the organizations that are applying? As far as, do they get access to-
Let me be clear on what this grant program is for. It's to market, help them with marketing and promotion of their event. And we're working on the criteria as we speak. It's not solid yet, but it's got to have some hotel bed tax generator in it. It's an economic development piece. It cannot be just to fund a good-feeling local event. That's not, number one, it's not my money. So I'm not in the business of just for feel-good. It has to have an economic impact criteria to it. But we're working with groups, and it's going to have an emphasis on African-American nonprofits for sure. But the criteria is going to need to be met.
Okay. Well, we can keep talking about it.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
The second question I had was around the, what are the Baltimore Heritage areas? I was looking at Service 590 for the civic promotion grants.
Is that me?
So Service 590 civic promotion grants, it says, "Service provides grants to nonprofit organizations that have historical education promotional activities in Baltimore. Current grantees are the Baltimore Public Markets, Lexington Market, and Arcade, and the Baltimore National Heritage Areas."
That's not Visit Baltimore.
Oh, okay. I must be in the wrong section. My apologies.
Yeah, no worries.
I'll come back if you have other questions, Councilman. Councilwoman Middleton?
Just two quick things. First of all, I just want to publicly thank you, Al, for the wonderful work you have been doing since the short time you have been here and the commitments you have made. Just proves that you are sincere about creating better cultural economic development in our arts and entertainment and just throughout, not just downtown, but you are making goals and performance measures to stretch throughout this whole, whole city. And you have been doing a phenomenal job. And I just, you know, my hat's off to you. You have taken strides and steps that other folks in your position have never attempted to do. And you have shown that through, you're working through the committee and with the Taxation Finance and Economic Development Committee. So I definitely want to thank you for that. I think, and I just want, I just want the public to also know that Mr. Al Hutchinson was working very diligently in areas in a state where they were so upset that he left. And there, I have a colleague on the National Association of Ticalities that was just, when he made the move here to take on Baltimore, they were just devastated. So we definitely have a wonderful person here that I think is going to continue to give that sense of pride and quality of life with arts and entertainment for our city. So again, I can't thank you enough. And we all, we don't get enough kudos to just give us that energy to, for that extra step to keep moving. And then my last, my question, because we're going through all these different changes for all different ages, from youth to millennials to our mature aging adult, are there moves to maybe work on changing some of our blue laws? And, you know, we have to have venues that for late-night arts and entertainment type things. And we just have the Horseshoe Casino open, you know, that's late. We need other venues to, you know, have that variety around the whole city and not just have that one place to, you know, have people go after 2:00 PM at night. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there for everyone to, you know, kind of make sure you include that in the mix. We are definitely in competition with our nearby Washington DC. And they have a lot of, you know, people leave our city on the weekends at night to go to DC because they stay open after 2:00 PM. So we want to keep, you know, things like that moving. And I'm just kind of throwing that out there for food for thought as we're growing our city. And if you want, do you have any comments on everything I just said?
Please keep your comments brief.
I'll just, to that point, I'll just say, we as Visit Baltimore, we're willing to partner with BOPA and other entities to help with that, with BDC, who should be the lead on finding these economic offerings. We want to partner. And so you got a friend in us to be at the table. And thank you for your comments, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. Al, last question. We've been joined by Councilman John Bullock from the Ninth District. Was Visit Baltimore impacted at all by the cybersecurity incident?
We were not. We were not. Um, we were on a totally separate system, but we were not. Uh, can I just make one last comment before I get out?
Sure.
If you don't mind, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I was coming back in town last night from a conference and I'm always thinking about Baltimore City from a branding standpoint. Baltimore City is a brand. And I think it's gonna take all of us in this room, including our council, to help us preserve the brand, promote the brand, and enhance the brand. Because right now, our brand is under siege a little bit. And so it's gonna take all of us in this room to really partner on this one and make sure we're doing all the right things we need to do to protect, protect this great brand. Cause it is a brand and I'm not just selling hotel rooms or the convention center. I'm selling a Baltimore brand. And I think council, our stakeholders, we have to understand, what do we need to do to partner? To your point, Councilman Pinkett, we gotta partner to protect the brand. And right now, there are folks around the country who don't know. And it's up to us to make sure we're doing our part, to make sure we're storytelling it in the right way and tell all the greatness that we have to offer as a city.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in the spirit of, um, partnering on the brand, um, one of the aspects of our brand identity that I am keenly aware of is the difficulty of transportation in the city. And I know that when I visit other cities that have great tourism, uh, they have, uh, much greater walkability and, um, other transportation, um, op, opportunities that are not automobile dependency and, uh, car centrism. And I know that you and I have spoken about this in the past and I have said very pointedly that I think that Visit Baltimore should be a leading voice on how we reduce dependency on automobiles and promote walkability and pedestrianism throughout our city as a critical aspect of enhancing tourism, um, and, uh, and other such things. That's something that I have, that, that I think is important in enhancing the brand and something that I, that I think we know clearly hinders the brand of Baltimore City. Um, and so in the spirit of partnership, you know, I haven't heard from Visit Baltimore that that's something that it is willing to advocate on the front lines for. Can you speak to that?
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Councilman, for your comment. Uh, I would say to you this, the number, one of the top reasons why visitors come to Baltimore is because of walkability. So we promote walkability big time, um, and that's one of the reasons they come. I would say to you, as far as increasing it and improving it, I'm all for that. I don't know if Baltimore should be the lead on that. Should Baltimore be at the table with DOT, with Public Works, with fire and police? Cause this is, this is not just a tourism piece, it's a city infrastructure issue. So do we want to be at the table? Absolutely. Absolutely at the table. Cause I think there's some things we need to look at infrastructure-wise, traffic lighting standpoint, congestion, that's a, that's a big reason why a lot of our county residents don't come to the city. I'm with you. Um, but I think, again, we have to have a broader conversation. Be very comprehensive, be strategic, not niche, but strategic in conversation. We want to be a part of that conversation for sure.
Thank you. Um, Al?
Yes, sir.
Visit Baltimore, you guys are good.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Councilman Pinkett?
Um, I have a question for the Walters Art Museum.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
How many, how many rental events do you have each year?
So a number of years ago, we had a very active rental program and we found that it was tiring our staff out and not a good return on investment. So we have re, we, we actually brought it way down. And what we've done now is made it very strategic to enhance our affiliation, so people who would affiliate. So I actually can't give you exactly the number, but it's not a significant part of our, um, our program because we frankly are, are expensive. You know, to keep the museum open, it costs a lot of money and then we use up our, we use overtime and it's so, it's something we want to do strategically.
And is a, and this is a question I'm gonna ask all of the cultural institutions that come before the council. Um, do, when you do have events, do you have an approved list for caterers?
Yes. Yes, we do. And we are very specific about them because again, we don't want to put our works of art at, um, at risk.
If I wanted to get an, have an African-American caterer, is there one on that list?
I believe so. I, I will get you the answer to that, but absolutely, and if there's not, there will be.
Jeff, please add that to the list.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Um, for all the cultural institutions and convention center and BOPA, was anyone impacted by the cybersecurity incident? BOPA was. Donna, um, that incident occurred on, uh, uh, May 6th.
Yes.
Um, when was the first time that our CIO Frank Johnson was in touch with you?
Um, we are on the call every day at 10:00, but we, uh, actually saw people on our premises yesterday.
You what?
We actually saw staff on our premises yesterday to take a look at our infected machines.
Okay. And has the CIO suggested that there is software that you should purchase or any specific vendors that you should be using?
No, not yet.
Okay. Um, if so, please let me know.
Okay.
I'd be very interested in, in hearing that. Has anyone else been impacted by the cybersecurity incident?
So we have our own system, but we were significantly impacted because of course you all are the providers of our benefits and so we have not been able to-
Got it.
-sign up. Thank you.
Understand, yep. Um, Donna, were you instructed to, um, create your own Gmail accounts?
Um, we were not instructed to do it. We did it on our own and, um-
So you didn't receive any guidance from BCIT on how to handle the email shutdown?
No.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions before we move to the next panel?
I do, I just want to make sure that, uh, Mrs. Sawyer has the numbers for, um, employment opportunities there. Oh, you are ready to do, you're shaking your head.
What, can you-
So I wanted to know the numbers, the breakdown of how many, when you say, uh, participate in helping with the book festival or whatever, um, small events that you had.
I've taken note and we'll get that back to you ASAP.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Councilman Pinkett?
Yeah, um, thank, thank you, Don. Just one quick question, and I don't know if it'll be a quick answer, maybe we need to talk later. Um, I'm curious to find out, um, what are the, the city's and BOPA's efforts as it relates to the film industry?
The film industry.
Baltimore used to have a really thriving film industry and because of some decisions, probably on the state level, that, you know, we aren't as robust as we used to. But, but the film industry is shifting in the nation and this might be a tremendous opportunity for Baltimore to revive some of that industry, um, that has, that we've lost and has gone to cities like Atlanta and even now going to Virginia. Um, and so I'm curious to know, you know, are we alert to that? Are we doing anything intentional?
We are very alert to it and, um, trying to take advantage of the fact that many production companies have decided not to go to, um, Alabama, uh, because of their restrictive, uh, recent restrictive legislation. So the thing that handicaps us is the, uh, cap on the tax credits for the state. If we could get that cap off-
That's right.
-then we could blow this up.
That's right.
But that's the problem, um, is to get our, um, the, the people in Annapolis to understand that there's more to gain than to lose if we, um, take that tax credit cap off.
Yeah, I think that every legislator possible, especially in the city, should be fighting for that, for that cap.
Absolutely.
It is such an economic, um, engine that we, we just letting go by.
Well, the, the, uh, if you've ever looked at the, the, the Film Office site, we have everything in the city that any production company could ever need, uh, to, to mount a production. The, the only problem is the tax incentives. Um, we have, uh, lots of support, we have wonderful technicians that live and work in the city, but if there are no productions, they have no work.
That's right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate everything that you're doing for our city. Next panel, uh, Small and Disadvantaged Businesses. We're about three minutes behind, so if everyone could, um, hurry up with the shuffle. Please and thank you.
All right, man. Thank you.
I guess, I mean, I don't know, like, I have a question.
Folks, if you, if you're in the previous meeting, if you could please exit chambers.
Okay, we're gonna get started.
Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, we're here for Small and Disadvantaged Business Panel. We have, uh, Law Department Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office.
Yes.
Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-Owned Business Development. Let's start out with law.
Good morning, Tamara Brown. I'm the chief of the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office within the Baltimore-
You're within the Department of Law?
Law Department, yes.
Michael, can you grab those doors, please? Thank you.
Good morning.
Um, you're with the Department of Law?
Yes, I am.
And I know you're with the Department of Law. Who's here from the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-Owned Business Development? Thank you, Mr. Amros.
Good morning.
Um, be, before you begin, I ask this question every year-
Yes.
-cause I continue to be confused about it. Can you explain to me the difference between these two offices? I don't want to be presumptuous and say, why are, why aren't you the same, but can you walk through that?
Okay. And I, and I did review last year, um, the, the examples that they gave you, so, um, basically-
Give me a high-level overview, two minutes-
High-level review, the Mayor's Office does the business development. They are more of an outreach service, um, for small businesses, minority and women-owned businesses. The Law Department is more focused on compliance with contracts, actual contracts. So when a contract is over fifty thousand dollars, Article 5 stipulates that there are, um, goals set on that contract. And every five years, the Law Department, um, uh, has a disparity study. So constitutionally, we're more constitutionally grounded because there's been, um, disparities with minority and women-owned businesses. So, um, once that disparity study is completed every five years, that gives us constitutional grounds to have this program. So there is law behind our portion of it where Paul's department is more, um, just outreach to the constituents that have businesses and helping them get started.
Got it.
Okay.
And, uh, if you have a presentation or you want to hit your slide?
Okay, so, um, this basically just shows, uh, our service descriptions and, uh, we are working with the, uh, finance to update this a bit, um, because it just basically shows certifications. But we do more than certified businesses. Again, we do, a large piece is compliance. Uh, we do a large number, every contract that goes to the Board of Estimates over fifty thousand dollars, we've reviewed, we review the bid packages. Um, we, there are a number of waivers that we submit for the Health Department, just every agency, uh, we touch just about every agency in the city, uh, when there, um, when there's an expenditure over fifty thousand dollars. I think that was the only slide they had for us. Mm-hmm.
Did, um, any, any colleagues have any questions?
I guess so. Are, are you, are you working-
Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. Are you working with, um, Paul Taylor?
Yes, we do coordinate some efforts, yes, together.
Okay. I know you have, uh, um, headquarters in the Park Circle area.
That is Paul Taylor. We are strictly with the Law Department. Um, we don't have any other locations. We are here in City Hall.
Um, do we refer you to, if there is a business in our communities that, um, I guess they've been a business for maybe two or three years and they've had, um, a problem, one of the owners could have gotten sick and, uh, owner is struggling, the other one is struggling by himself. How, how, because you're under the Law Department, could you kind of explain how you deal with, could, could I refer a person like that to you?
So a business owner that is a certified MBE or WBE with our, with the Law Department, uh, we deal with issues like on a contract if a prime contractor has not paid a subcontractor.
Okay.
For, as far as your example, if a, uh, they, this own, this owner was an MBE and got sick and was not able to perform on a contract, uh, we would work with Paul Taylor's group to maybe find some resources, but I, I deal with a lot of the investigations. We have an investigator on our team. So if a prime on a contract, um, has a sub, which would be an MBE or WBE, and they were not receiving payment, it was affecting their business, we do get involved. We send our investigator out to see what's going on in the contract because they've made a contractual agreement with the city to abide by these, uh, goals that our office has set on a contract-by-contract basis. So, um, in those instances, we do get involved. If it's just a small business owner, Paul Taylor's office would most likely deal with, um, resources for them, so they, they wouldn't lose their business or-
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Paul, if you can come, um, perfect time and if you could come up and, and give your presentation on the Mayor's Office, um, of Minority and Women-owned Business. Um, I think we have one slide, um, for you, but, um, if you could just give us a quick presentation.
Okay, so, uh, Paul Taylor and, um, uh, the Director for the Small, Mayor's Office of Small and Minority Business Office. And, um, ma, the majority of our work is centered around making sure, well, being an advocate for small business and for minority business in the office. Um, I don't know if you just want me to read the slide or to give, just give you some, some data background.
Sorry, there, there was an oversight in including, uh, the slide for Paul Taylor's office. They are an activity within the mayorality. So on page-
Oh, okay. Got it.
On page 422, if you look at expenditures by activity, it's Activity 35. So the total budget for this year is 1.5 million dollars and last year's expenditure is 1.4. I'm sorry for the oversight.
Okay. So, I, I apologize, I, for some reason, I didn't have, uh, disinformation. Anyway, um, so one of the challenges that we've, we've had, of course, is that we're, um, making sure that we are advocating on behalf of small business. We also can, uh, run the Small Business Resource Center, still. Um, and that Small Business Resource Center provides training, um, classes, it provides counseling services. We partner with several other counseling organizations such as SCORE. We partner with, um, the PTAP and if you, uh, Procurement Technical Assistance, which is a state organization. The, the important thing, I think, for us is that, um, you know, we, we see on average about, uh, three thousand people coming in through our classes and counseling combined, um, in the course of a year. We also, in this office, here in the Mayor's Office, we advocate on behalf, so there may be calls coming in or, uh, issues that come up and we're, uh, we're here, we, we make sure that we, we, um, investigate whatever those concerns might be and sometimes it means going back to agencies and doing that. Some of the successes that we've had is that we, um, we've been able to assist about two, 225 businesses that, um, got started and operating, um, during this fiscal year. Um, we also, uh, manage, as you know, that the, we manage the, uh, Main Streets, which, um, is moving along with, there's some concerns that we have with, with some of the Main Streets, um, at, so they're going through a refresh process right now. So those are the highlights of, of some of the activity that we're doing, so I don't know if there are any other questions for me. Council President Scott?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Taylor, and thank you for, for everything that you do. Uh, couple questions for you. Give me one second. For both of you, actually. So, oh crap, sorry, you guys. Flip this over really quickly. So this is, question actually, first one would be for you, ma. Uh, to confirm, the, the final performance measure, if you look at Volume 1, P380, Page 384, uh, Minority Women's Business Opportunity Office measures the total time it takes to complete an application? Uh, that's correct, right?
To my knowledge, yes. To my knowledge, yes.
So, in fiscal year 18, it took the office 18 days to complete a review of a minority or women-owned business. Can you explain why the target was then changed to 39 days in fiscal 19 and to process the application and then now 35 days proposed for fiscal '20?
I think realistically, I can't speak to why it was originally set. I started with the department in January, took over as the acting chief, and as of April, I am the current chief. I can tell you that, that being a performance measure, that's something I did want to work out with the Finance Team. When we receive a new application, there's a number of things that occur. That is probably the timeframe for an application that does not have any issues with it. So we receive a large volume of new applications. We receive renewals every two years. So when you factor that in, there could be, we have to determine if they are truly in the market area. Sometimes, some applicants, we have to send an investigator out. I have one investigator that goes out to their location, and if they are not there, it's an unannounced visit. There is an announced visit that has to be scheduled at that time. So we have to absolutely verify they're here. We review their tax records. So every application isn't the same. A renewal application, you would assume, takes less time because they're already certified. But we've been doing thorough investigations. A lot of companies may come from Washington DC to get business in Baltimore. They get an office for a year, they get certified, they're, you know, we don't assume they're still there when it's time for the renewal. We take the time to go out, we look for, we ask for renewed lease. So there's a lot of background investigating that goes on. So the timeframe change, I think it's a little more realistic based on the amount of work that goes into reviewing, and we get a large volume of applications, so...
Thank you. Mr. Amros, so you guys committed to working with them to make sure that the measures reflect the office's capabilities, but also considering the resources that they are allotted?
Yes, sir. We'll reach out to them over the summer to get these in place for the fiscal '21 budget book.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. My next question, actually, Mr. Taylor, I think, would be for, oh, you can, you guys don't, you've been relieved from the podium. You can do it from your seats. Question for you guys. Last year, I asked specific questions about partnering. You guys partnered with MOCJ to increase funding to support the employment of returning citizens. Can you talk about what you guys have done since then to build and strengthen that partnership?
So, one of the things that we've been doing is making sure that we talk to organizations like JARC and some other organizations that's currently doing some training for returning citizens. And to the extent that some of them are interested in entrepreneurship, we've been working with them, providing classes to those organizations so that they can look at entrepreneurship as an option. We are also working with Open Works, which is on, you may be familiar with that, on Greenmount Avenue. And they've been doing a job training program for folk who have returning citizens also.
So, you guys, can you and this, Mr. Amros, is a follow-up. Do you have some sort of measurable data that you can provide to us via the Mayor's Office on how many businesses, you know, you guys have supported? And how many returning citizens they have hired or percentages of returning citizens that they have that work in their companies?
We can get, we can follow up with that information.
Sorry, Mr. President, if you could repeat that one more time.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I was talking, not yet. Over to you, Mr. Amros. MBE is going to, we want them to provide the amount of businesses that they have worked with in the past fiscal year that they work with to increase the amount of returning citizens that they hire, and then trying to quantify that, the amount of returning citizens that those businesses hire, percentages of the employees in those businesses that are returning citizens. Lastly, Mr. Beckford, thank you, sir, and welcome. Can you tell me how many small businesses BDC did support for in fiscal 18 and 19? And how many you plan to support if you have a target goal for fiscal '20?
Trying to go back to yesterday's budget presentation to see if we have that total number of small number, of small businesses. I mean, I can give you our Side Improvement Grant numbers that we've done, but that's probably a smaller figure on the total number of businesses that we've actually supported. So if that's information that I can get to you later on this afternoon, that would be great.
Yep, that's quite all right. And then, just because you're here, and sorry, Mr. Chair, yesterday, and because I was in and out because of other events, there was a discussion about the ETC and about the East Side location no longer being there. Can we talk about that a little bit? Because no one, like defunding the East Side location or something like that?
Oh, I mean, the, I know that Ms. Clark, when she presented yesterday, she basically described the fact that private, the private sector has taken hold of that industry in a sense of emerging technology centers and doing that sort of business. And we've, in a sense, done our job because it has happened so much.
Sounds good to me.
So, the one East Side center that we currently have, in which we, in a sense, put it in a place that produced economic development in that area and grew that area so much, we felt like it's, it is something that, emerging technology centers aren't the, aren't what we need to do anymore from an economic development standpoint. We need to figure out something else. As Councilman Pinkett pointed out, like, we need to start utilizing maybe other city services to promote economic development in other areas of the city. And we're gonna try and promote and do that in other areas of the city as well. But from an emerging technology center standpoint, these centers have, basically, we've run, we've run our course with them because the private sector has taken over from that.
Yep, thank you. I just, that's what I was hoping to hear, so. And I agree with the Vice Chairman that we all need to work together to invest in other ways. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I had a couple of questions for Mr. Taylor. The first is in the budget book, it mentions an increase in rent for the Small Business Resource Center relocation.
Yes, so we were at 1101 East 33rd Street, and we were a subtenant of the ETC. We are now in a city-owned building at 3,000 Druid Park Drive, and that space is a little larger. We have, we moved from 2,800 square feet to now 5,400 square feet where we can provide training. We can do the, we have conference rooms there that we can meet with our clients with and still have a library in the facility. So that's what the increase was. And because of that, I'm sorry, because of that, what we used to, we had bundled services, like the janitorial services and so forth. We're actually now gonna have to pay those individually for the facility.
Were there other locations considered?
Yes, so we looked at some other...
And let me, let me explain why I'm asking. Once again, it kind of dovetails off of what Council President Scott just mentioned. When the city has to leave, and this is a private space, this is not...
City-owned, city-owned building.
Where you relocated, still a city-owned, okay, okay. Well, I guess that, yeah, explains it then. But when we relocate, I also think that there's an opportunity to spur some economic development, you know, in that relocation, especially if we're bringing a presence, we're bringing employees, we're bringing staff, we're bringing visitors to a particular area.
That's right.
Especially when we're talking about Small Business Resource. It could have been on a commercial corridor rather than a business park, but go ahead.
We're actually being offered some additional space on the East Side of Baltimore in a up-and-coming area that's a little ways away from that today, but we're looking at that very seriously because I think that corridor on the East Side requires some additional support. And we think that we can bring that with, just by our presence, but also because we can provide resources to those up-and-coming vendors that's gonna be in there, the shop owners.
Okay. I know that we'd be curious to hear more about those efforts. I know that...
When we move further along, I'll definitely bring that information back.
Thank you. My second question is related to, are there performance measures for your activity?
Yes, so we capture all of our activities, so we can present that information to you. It's who comes, what services we provided, how many businesses we assisted, how many businesses are currently still in business or are, and/or are growing, so we can capture that.
So for budget, I mean, is it in some, under some other activity as it relates to Mayor's Office of Minority Women-owned Businesses?
We have historically not reported in the budget book for the elected officials, but we can see for fiscal '21, we can make an appendix for some of the performance measures for some of the activities that used to be their own program. So for example, City Stat has internal measures that they've developed for themselves. We'll work on trying to incorporate those into the book.
So, when it was under BDC, it had its measures, but when it came under the Mayor's Office, no longer measures?
Yes.
We, yeah, so we still...
That were published.
I know. I know you're measuring yourself, but I'm just saying as far as the budget book.
Yeah, that were published.
We were 812 back then, yeah. Okay, we want to see their measures returned to the budget book.
Understood.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you. And just, sorry, can I, we clarify, so is it solely because they're in the Mayor's Office that they, do any of the other agencies within the Mayor, or programs in the Mayor's Office? Also, is that just the standard practice?
It's just the mayorality. I believe everyone that has their own individual program has performance measures. So, MOHS, MOED.
There's a number, looking through the budget book, I mean, there's a plethora of programs. African-American, Office of African-American Merrill Engagement is in there. Several other programs are in there, and I would absolutely like to know how things are going in the public shit as well with any of those programs. We should be as transparent as possible. And I would hope that the Mayor's Office would be the most transparent among any other agency, given that it is a citywide elected position that has, brings a lot of attention and a lot of focus and provides direction for the city.
And if I can just chime in, Councilman Burnett, if certain entities within the mayorality haven't not already come before the Budget Committee for this cycle, if they are measuring themselves, I think they should come prepared with those measures so that they can answer questions. I don't, you know, I don't know if they put that on, I mean, it should be on the list, and I don't know which ones haven't come before us yet, but, I mean, we're gonna ask questions about, you know, how they measure themselves, so they need to come prepared to answer some questions about measurement.
Sure, Mr. Vice Chair, if, in order to sort of not derail the rest of this hearing, if I could get with you right after this, we could go through the list of what's coming up next, and then I can work with our staff to make sure.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So two quick questions, and this can be anyone, jump in. What are the fiscal year 18 annual outcomes for reaching MBE and WBE legislative goals of 27% MBE contracts and 10% WBE contracts?
So we, fiscal year 2018, we are about, the overall goal, we're reaching about 17% MBE and 6% WBE. Our database was online, so I don't have the, I would have brought that with me. But to my recollection, that's about where we were at. I did a comparison with a city like New York City, and we were actually on par with their percentages. We've worked closely with them, learning some best practices from New York, and, yeah, we were certainly within the same range as their percentages at that time.
Okay. So, for the organization themselves, do you have data with you on how many city contracts have gone to minority-owned business or women-owned business in the last three fiscal years?
I do not have that data with me, but I can provide that data.
Okay. Can I make those two requests? I'm sorry. Can I make those two requests?
Yeah, if you can restate them.
Okay, so...
Again, that is in our online database. We had a database that I don't have access to right now, given the...
Oh, yeah.
But if we do get that data back, we certainly can provide that information.
I know the struggle, don't worry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, once, post-cyber attack, if you could provide the committee the actual outcomes for, and I guess if you have an online database, you would be able to provide last year's as well, FY18 also.
And going forward, as I've taken over the office, I did want more transparency. I believe those numbers should be on our website regularly so that the citizens can see that. So every year, we will be providing those numbers, rather than it sitting in a database and having to request the information. It is my goal to get that information online. And also, yeah, we'll be tracking a lot more things once we get back up and running. That's part of my mission.
Awesome. Okay, so I look forward to that.
To clarify, you're gonna be Deputy City Solicitor Dana Moore. It's gonna be available in real time with regular updating. So anytime someone wants to take a peek at how we're doing and what the city is doing, they will be able to access that data post-ransomware attack.
Okay. So, that'll be published online, it'll be easily accessible. Do you, I guess, prior to the cyber issues we've been having, what were, what was the timeline for that, to get that up? And I guess how far off do you think, well, I guess there's really no way to know.
It was just a matter of, it was just a matter of getting, so my website, the city services site is part of BSIT, and then we have the Law Department's website. So we were reformatting a number of things. Within my first 30 days as the chief, we started reformatting our applications. They were more user-friendly. We've been using the same applications for about 10 years, at least a PDF fillable form. We were not, we're not able to do compliance. We're doing that manually. So, in lieu of that, we were making some updates, but updating our website was a priority. I did have a work order in with BSIT in order to start working on that. They just hadn't gotten back to me yet. So, I was ready to put FY18's information out, and as soon as we're back up, we can provide that. And we will be working on real-time information as contracts are awarded.
Okay. And once it's up, if you could send it out to the council, just sort of alert us so that we can promote it to our constituents as well.
Certainly.
So, my apologies back to the questions. Those were the, where we were as far as reaching goals, the contract goals for fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19. And then the second question was, how much money in city contracts have gone to NWBEs in the last three fiscal years? And obviously, the deadline would be once the information is available and you can distribute it out to the council. Last thing I would ask about the website, is there an online directory where people can search for certified NWBEs and WBEs?
There is, there was. We were on, we are, again, the Law Department has their own, which is still up. Some of the city sites are up. We were on the city services page where you would go to pay a water bill. So we are down, our database is down. I know that the school systems use our database, Baltimore County uses our database, so it has been an issue. But we are updating that as well. That's something that I was also updating because a lot of the users had issues searching for a vendor for, with a particular field, like grass cutting or mowing. We were using a city service codes, which our office created. I'm moving to a NACE code, which is a more uniform code. So we were, I actually, I had a trouble ticketing to update our database so that it's more user-friendly. It helps bidders find companies a little easier. So it's, we were in a complete reformation, a process of, within a year, we were making a lot of changes. And we will continue to do so once the system is back up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul and Dana, when is the, let's start with Paul. When is the first time that you heard from the city's CIO, Frank Johnson, after the cybersecurity incident?
Yeah, so we, there was a call to the cabinet to come and sort of get an update on what's going on after we started hearing. On the 7th, we just started not being able to access files. We called our local, our city hall's engineer, and then we were told that there was an attack. So it was, it was the day of the 7th.
And what guidance were you given regarding email addresses?
So, on email addresses, we were asked to use a uniform naming convention that sort of, so that everybody else become illuminated, which was the mayor, JY@gmail.
Okay. And you don't have anyone in your office that creates email addresses for a living?
No, but...
That's okay. It would have been helpful if BSIT had offered to do that for you? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
But, well, I mean, Gmail is pretty, I mean, it's a pretty uniform approach, but yeah.
Right. Just as BSIT being a shared service provider that provides services to you, one would have a reasonable expectation that that shared service provider would handle all issues related to... all issues related to the portfolio of services they provide, correct?
Right. I think, but I think they provided all of us with a one pager that sort of outlined the steps that we should take to create the account.
Do you have that in electronic format?
Probably not electronic. I have the hard copy because at that time, we were unable to print.
Can you get that to us by the end of the day, to Mr. Amoros, please?
Sure.
Dana?
So, we, we knew pretty early on that there was a problem because we were starting, we could see ourselves losing data on, I think it was on Monday, that might have been May-
Six.
May sixth. So, we are a very data driven, document driven operation, and when we were literally watching our documents disappear, we knew we were in trouble. We have two people on, as part of the law department, who are responsible for keeping us updated and in touch with our information technology. So, we called them, and they, one is Fred Smalkin, who's an attorney, who is in close contact with BSIT. So, we knew pretty early on that there was a very serious problem. We participated in the mayor's call for all agency heads to meet. I want to say it was Tuesday morning, and Frank Johnson led us through a discussion of what the problem, what he understood the problem to be at the time. I believe on that Tuesday, we were told to, we got two different directions. One was that we should all unplug our computers and just walk away, but unplug them and don't touch anything. The second direction was, don't unplug, but don't touch. And I'm really putting it in the simplest of language. So, there were two different messages, and that did cause some confusion. We ended up, I think, almost everybody unplugged, and we ended up unplugging everything because we just didn't know what the attack was. But by Tuesday, whenever that, that meeting was, it was either Tuesday or Wednesday, it was Tuesday morning. There was a little bit more information. The mayor's office of emergency management had stepped in to sort of coalesce and guide some of the discussions. And then things happened pretty rapidly after that. The, we started thinking about workarounds. I think immediately, we knew that we needed to get people's cars off the impound lot. So, the law department was asked to help figure out how to make that happen. And then eventually, we figured out about the real estate transactions, and we helped, you know, come up with a workaround for that. People needed their cars. People needed to close on their houses. Throughout all of this, there was a lot of communication with BSIT. We're, I think we are in a unique situation because we do have two people who are part of the law department. Jade Mitchell, who is just brilliant, who was able to very calmly tell us, this is what you need to do. This, and she was able to work with each of us, you know, individually. Fred Smalkin, you know, also had a lot of, has a lot of insight, and they were in close communication with BSIT. So, I think we were in a, we were in a, a different situation. But we also were very much in touch with the mayor's office, participated in all of the calls. With respect to email, I do not recall getting any guidance on setting up separate email. In fact, the lawyers throughout the law department did different things. I will just speak for myself. I have a Gmail account. It's ancient. I use that. We also resorted to text messaging. We set up groups of, for text messaging. We set up groups for email. We operate by group. We have our settlement committee. We have the chiefs. So, we were able to set up that workaround so we could continue to communicate. As you know, we're in three different offices. It turns out that the attorneys that are on the email system that are in legal affairs, they were okay, which was good to know. They were still able to do what they needed to do. But we, we did, we came up with different innovations that were specific and helpful for the different practice groups. I personally do not recall getting any specific guidance from BSIT as to email.
One question for clarification. You mentioned that on the first day, you were told to unplug, but also to keep plugged in. You got both of those pieces of guidance from BSIT?
We did. We, they were coming from BSIT, sent to us through, you know, our folks that do the technology. And I think that day was, I mean, I experienced it as a bit, you know, chaotic. I don't, I felt like we were figuring it out as we were experiencing it.
Yeah, my issue's not with you all. I think it's very innovative what you all did, and, you know, you should be grateful that you had two people that are so highly competent. Unfortunately, on the city council, and this is no offense to the council president's staff, we didn't have two people that were giving us guidance like that, that have an IT background, and we certainly weren't getting any guidance from BSIT, which is extremely disappointing. And that's why I've been asking this line of questioning to each agency before the budget committee.
Right. I appreciate, I appreciate that. I think if we were to, God forbid we should ever go through this again, I think there are a lot of things that would be done, would be done different.
So, one of, yeah, one of the things that, and we'll have to talk with the president, but that Councilman Schleifer and I, who will be co-chairing the cybersecurity and emergency preparedness committee, will have to do with continuity of operations. And it sounds like you guys have some great lessons learned, and my early encouragement to you would be to consider documenting that for if and when this does happen again, because that's going to be part of some, some larger guidance that we're going to talk about at a later date. So, while this stuff is still fresh in your heads, I think, you know, typing it up in a Word document would be a good idea.
Concur. I mean, a hundred percent concur. There's a lot that, there's a lot that we learned just to survive, but we're a very outward facing agency, and so we know that the public needs to know what we're doing, how we're doing, and agencies rely, we, I think tomorrow said, we touch every agency, and so we had to come up with, I mean, emailing and texting at three AM was not unheard of. There was very little sleep, but we got it done.
Appreciate it. Councilwoman Snead?
Mr. Taylor, can you tell me how many Main Streets we have?
We have eight Main Streets and one that is in a pending status as we work through bringing it back online.
And when we're bringing, is that the Monument Street one that we're-
Monument Street, that's right.
Bring it back online? Okay. So, can you tell me how much money goes into Main Street out of this budget? Would like for staff, everything?
Yes. So, right now, there's, each of the Main Streets get about twenty five thousand dollars, and this helps them in their management processing. So, there's about two hundred and twenty five thousand that goes into that. There's also our staff, staffing, which is about a hundred and, slightly less than a hundred and fifty thousand.
A hundred and fifty thousand for staff? So, how many staff should be a part of Main Streets?
So, right now, there's a director, which is Ms. Jones, and then there's, she has an assistant. We provide some staffing in terms of helping with some of the processing of the contracts and some other things internally in my office.
How long has the assistant been there?
How, how long is what? Sorry?
Her assistant been there?
Her assistant, well, so her assistant was there for about eight months, and then she, she's left. So, we're looking now to bring somebody else back on.
Okay. So, we have one vacant, one vacancy.
Right.
How, how many positions is supposed to be for Main Streets?
So, in this, in the budget going forward, we, we anticipated getting one other professional assistant, assistant to her, and then the clerical position.
Okay, so one more for twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Okay. And so with the rebrand, are we paying for anything for this, for the rebrand?
Yes. So, there is a consultant that's providing, who's part of the National Main Streets Program that's coming in and doing sort of an evaluation of all of the Main Street facilities. And so, that consultant's actually coming in, taking a look at where we are, what, what systems we have in place, and then making some recommendations, not only to the management office, but also to all of the Main Streets.
And so, out of ours, since we have one offline, what's our most successful Main Street?
So, currently, there are a couple that, we have Laurville, we have Waverly that are doing well. Those are the two that I think are growing right now. The southeast, one, what's that? Highland Town is also doing very well. Again, what we've, what we've noticed is that if you have a strong organization that it is embedded in, they seem to survive and actually do pretty well. One that we're paying a considerable amount of attention to right now is Pennsylvania Avenue, which is starting to show some promise because they have a community plan that they're working off of.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Vice Vice Chair, I guess, at this point. So, I wanted to go back to the MBE, the WBE outcomes. So, I believe the goals are supposed to be twenty seven percent MBE, ten percent WBE. But the outcomes for FY eighteen, you indicated were seventeen percent and six percent. Can you speak to what the department is doing to try and meet compliance with that so we can ensure that, there are a greater share of businesses getting these contracts?
So, the twenty seven and ten percent is an aspirational goal. There are instances where there are contracts that exceed that percentage, and there are instances where some contracts are lower in that percentage. So, what, what I've started to do is take a look at what pre qualification code areas where we are lacking MBEs and WBEs, and they're pretty, it's pretty consistent. We have some areas where we are top heavy in MBEs and WBEs and areas where we're lower. Paul Taylor and I, we've spoken about this, and so I think that we need to take a more focused approach as far as who we're certifying. We certainly certify every business that seeks certification. However, because Paul's team does the outreach, I, you know, I've spoken to him about, the outreach should begin to focus on some of the areas where we don't have MBEs and WBEs. So, we're going to work together to, to look at that. I sent him our numbers recently to show where the actual metrics of what, what we have and where we are, where we are low in MBEs and WBEs. So, I think concentrating on those areas, you know, to speak to the council president's question about returning citizens, I think that's part of the discussion. We have areas and we know contracts are coming. We know who the primes are. We know who the WBEs are. We know what areas where we don't have a lot of representation. So, we can, you know, I think all of that is a collaborative effort, you know, to get more citizens to work, to get more businesses in areas where we don't have businesses. That was one of the driving forces why I elected to speak with New York City. I found that they had a bid bonding assistance program that helped a lot of their smaller businesses that could not afford the bond for construction contracts. Paul Taylor was also involved in that meeting. So, that's something we've considered. I'm not sure how we could do it, but they actually help a lot of the businesses bid on these contracts. So, there's a, there's a lot of things we can do. We're picking up best practices from different areas and different cities, and, but the, but the best effort is for us to focus where we're low. I think that's very important.
Okay. So, I saw one of the metrics, well, Paul, did you want to speak to any of the outreach or community, like what that looks like and what it would take on your end to help push these numbers up?
I think just, just as Tamara was just saying, the, one of the things that we've been doing is working with some of the contractors who are actually the primes or the owners who are doing some of the work, for instance, Port Covington. And we've just initiated a mentor protege program in an effort to grow the contractors doing the, what they call the horizontal one B parts of the contract, and we're also now looking at some of the other verticals. So, those are ways that we're trying to make sure that we have additional contractors that are going to have an opportunity to work with primes and increase their capacity, and that will speak to, to some of the efforts there. The other thing that we're looking at is, so where there are, where there are opportunities to look at city contracts, I'm not sure how many you're familiar, but there's something called Baltimore City Buy, and you can see contracts that are, where there are open bids available. But what we're also showing people are the, the bids that are active because you can see when those contracts are going to expire. And so, some of these contracts, contractors can start looking, or vendors can start looking at where there are opportunities for them that are coming up in the future.
Okay.
I'd just add, if you don't mind, one more, one more thing where I found where we were finding issues with compliance is when a contract is awarded, the subs were not aware that they were awarded, and sometimes work would get started a little later with the subs. Not to say that the primes were intentionally doing this, but what I've done, what I'm starting to do, when we do award a contract, I'm notifying the MBEs and WBEs that the contract was awarded on this date, and I send them a copy of the statement of intent that was signed by them, the percentage of the contract that they're supposed to get. And so, I also have asked the agencies to include the subs in the pre-construction conferences that they have with the primes. The subs have kind of been left out. A lot of times, subs will call and say, has this contract even started? So, we have to notify them, and we have to, a lot of times, they sign a blank statement of intent, which I've asked them not to do because they don't know what percentage they're owed on a contract. And so, we get to the end of a contract and they're not compliant. I will, I'm following the law to a T. We will be bringing some primes to the board of estimates and penalizing, that is also in the law, for non-compliance. So, we take this very seriously, and I believe within the next thirty days, we will be bringing up a prime to the board for, to recommend a penalty for not being compliant.
Okay. And do you, I guess, for a data request, could you provide us how often you are, like, finding that there are non-compliance issues? Is that information online, or is that something you can provide the committee for the last two fiscal years?
So, we are, in Article Five, you also see that we are supposed to submit a annual report, and we will begin to provide an annual report on all of the contracts that are awarded, who's compliant, who's not. Sometimes there are instances, there's a reason why a lot of times they're not, they're not compliant. We follow up with the subs if they don't have the staffing, if they don't have the resources, if it's too much work for them. So, so there's, sometimes there are reasons for non-compliance, and sometimes, you know, there, there are not reasons. So, we will certainly begin to provide an annual report. That's more transparency. Our office has, it's been kind of stove piped, and we do want that transparency, and that should be available to anyone on an annual basis, how we're doing, what companies are non-compliant, and so forth, yeah.
So, that'll be, you said you're going to produce the annual report?
Yes, we are. We will be providing an annual report.
At the end of this year? Calendar year or fiscal year? When would that be done?
We would be able to do that for fiscal year twenty twenty. I think by the end of twenty twenty, we should have. We don't have the technology. Technology's been a challenge for us, but we're working around that.
Okay. Well, I guess in the interim, would you be to provide what you have as far as data on non-compliance to the committee?
Yes.
And then the last thing, I think we got, we have a second. Okay, last question. Is you track the number of training and outreach sessions, FY eighteen, there were fourteen. Is that number suffice? Is that on par with other cities? Do you think that an increase in the number of trainings would help meet compliance with the goals? As far as being able to build, because what I'm hearing is like, there seems to be a lot of capacity and communication issues that a lot of minority or minority women owned business contractors are experiencing themselves. And I know that, for example, I did go to visit, like, the DPW has a whole, like, city contracts training program and a pipeline program, and so I did get to visit that. Is that, would that be included in one of these events, or is that sort of a separate thing? Can you just talk a little bit about what that looks like and what the challenges that you may have at growing this number? Are there capacity issues, or are there opportunities to partner with outside entities? Just speak to that a little bit for us.
So, the DPW program, we do participate in that. My office does participate, and we do have a class. I think that the outreach does include, I think it's mostly events that Paul Taylor's office facilitates. I, speaking with New York, there are more training opportunities that I think are, my office can do. It's, it's something that we're looking into doing. Again, I've, I've been in this position since April officially, and I am working on a plan so that we can- and I am working on a plan so that we can conduct more training. I think that will be helpful, certainly, yeah. And we're trying to get a curriculum for my staff, first and foremost. They, they need some training, and then for, for the constituents and the business owners.
Yeah. So, we, we conduct quite a bit of training. The Growth But By Design was a curriculum that we created, and the DPW is continuing to work with. And I think that's, that's, that and many other, we look, we're looking at where there are other organizations that have been able to partner with us to do training. We do about 115 classes a year throughout, for the, at the Small Business Resource Center, and, and we now have with the new facility, we actually have more capability to do more training there. So, that's, that's, you'll see an increase. And we partner with, with Embu's office and invite her to, to several of our events so that she can speak to what, what certification looks like and, and how that works in Baltimore City.
And then my question, then I'll turn it back over to Vice Chair Pinkett. I noticed through, I noticed in the city, there's a lot of struggling business space areas and communities like Cross Keys. But I noticed that, I guess, I see some kind of experiment where they, they want to put maybe some pop-up type businesses to try and experiment. Could, anyone elaborate? Is that something, an idea that you're doing around the city? And as we know, you know, Cross Keys is kind of in dire need of some help, even though that's a privately-owned area. And we do have that meeting coming up on, in fact, next Tuesday. But could you kind of, anyone, kind of talk about these pop-up retail spaces that can, that would have an interest for any type of small business, or someone that had their dream of doing some type of business?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, one of the successful one that's really operating right now, which is sort of leading the way in, in terms of how we think about these, are things like the, thank you, things like, our house, for instance, has the little pop-up over there. Well, that's, that's good when you have a willing owner of the building or landlord who's willing to do it, because it does require some, some challenges that, that, for instance, you know, there's insurance issues that, that the landlord has to work with. So, but it is a good idea because at a very low cost, a small business can go in and sort of have a proof of concept, whether their idea works or not, and sort of, without having to be locked into a long-term lease. We've been talking to some of the Main Street managers, for instance, to try to negotiate with some of the landlords to see if that can become available in their areas also. So, those are the kinds of things that I think it's a good idea. I think we could work through some of the challenges, and, and if there's some way that we could support some of the landlords so they can do more of these, I think it would be very useful.
And so, to follow up on what Paul just said, we actually are trying to do that. We, we have staff that has been strategizing on how to connect entrepreneurs with empty spaces and commercial quarters like a Monument Street and other areas. We actually, I think, submitted some dollars for CIP this year that I'm not quite sure if we're going to get yet to implement this. So, it's top of mind for us as far as trying to fill those empty spaces and, and at a period of time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, I mean Vice President. I just had two questions before we close out this hearing. Oftentimes, when we talk about MB, WBE, especially as relates, at least my perception in the city, is most of the activity happens around construction and demolition. And while there are quite a bit of, you know, MBE, WBE businesses in a variety of different disciplines, can both of you speak about, you know, what are our efforts to enhance, you know, those businesses, those activities, and make certain that those entities are prepared for the, the work that everybody else is getting? And, you know, we, we seem to not get, you know, get as much.
Yeah. So, on, on, one of the, over the last couple of years, one of the challenges that we've been working with is trying to figure out how and when, because it's really a timing issue also. Do we bring in the engineers and the architects and the other services that provide either, either whether it's construction or whether it's IT? So, we, because a lot of times, those, those projects, especially when it's on the private side, the, the architects are being called in early to sort of help the owners strategize around, you know, put their program together for a, a business. So, it really is making sure that when developers and, and, and other building owners have the need for these, that they see us as a resource, that we can bring in some of those, those types of professional services, as well as the construction services also. So, it is, you know, on the city side, for instance, projects that we're doing, we encourage people to get pre-qualified, because if they're pre-qualified, they'll start, especially the consultants and engineers, they'll get notification automatically as part of the, the process that the city has for outreach for consultants and, and engineers to do work. So, pre-qualification is very important. So, we try to make sure that people are aware of that, especially on the architectural and the engineering side.
But even, I guess, on the private side, if the, if the, let's say, for example, the developer was getting some type of city incentive, there would be a MBE, WBE requirement. So, I mean, and I don't know if it's already in place or not. So, and like you said, by the time they, sometimes they even make that ask for city resources, they have already either used architects, engineers, or whatever. So, are we, are we saying that potentially we need to put something even in our incentives to say, if you, if you have intent on asking for city services, there is going to be, you know, there's going to be some requirement that, that MBE, WBE is reflected, you know, throughout all of your, your disciplines? So, don't come, you know, having, don't, don't come to the, to the process where you've already eliminated the possibility of architect. You've already eliminated the possibility of engineer. You've already eliminated so many other disciplines that could have benefited from the project, because now you're at a certain part of your pre-development.
Right. We're, we're starting to show some success with Port Covening, for instance, which got the, the TIF from the city. And we've had, actually had an active engagement with them. So, on a monthly basis, we have an advisory group that meets, and these are where these concerns and questions have come up, and, and they've been very, very active in helping us to really identify the projects that are coming online and architectural, engineering needs that are, that are needed, and we're putting people in front of those projects.
Tamara, did you want to add?
Just so, so for the Law Department, I'm trying to, I think in the past, we've been a little behind when we, when we catch up with some of the private development. So, as soon as I see a commitment to comply or any type of form, or I know a project is starting, I am trying to reach out to the developer and tell them, these resources are available so that we can get more early on versus just in the construction stage, and we can have more of the planning involvement with MBEs and WBEs in the planning.
And we're past time, so I'm not going to ask a question. I'm just going to make a statement that, just as important as we monitor that on the private level, I think we, we can do a better job even on, on city projects, because especially when, when we're talking about DPW projects, some of these are, you know, long-term, long-planning. We know, you know, for example, let's take the, the two reservoirs, you know, Ashburton and Droid. I mean, we knew these projects were coming long time. And so, if we, if the MBE, WBE firms aren't prepared at that point, we knew 10 years ago, we needed to be preparing those firms for this type of work that was coming. And so, I think we, we need to be more proactive on those jobs as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, we're going to move on to the next panel. Everyone good? Okay. Parking, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Parking Authority, you're up next.